Good evening, I'd like to call the East Hemphill Township Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Tonight's meeting has been advertised to be held in person and online using Zoom with login and call information posted on our website. Tonight's video and audio is being recorded. For tonight's meeting, Robert's rules will still apply and the meeting will be run by the chairman, who will be assisted by an employee managing the Zoom site. During the meeting, in order to offer comment, you must be recognized by the chairman. For people utilizing Zoom, you will need to use the chat function to be recognized. Text your name and address. Your request to speak will then be passed on by staff to the chairman to be recognized. Once recognized by the chairman, we ask that you unmute your microphone, and after speaking, we ask that you please mute your microphone. East Hemphill Township Public Comment Rules will apply for all public comment. You must be a resident or business owner in the township to speak. You must identify yourself by name and address before speaking, and sign the guest login for meeting minute purposes, or follow the chat procedure already discussed for Zoom attendance. Comment is limited to three minutes and must be about the agenda item being discussed, with the exception of public comment for non-agenda items. No action will be taken on any non-agenda item of a non-emergency nature during the public comment period for non-agenda items. All comments should be directed to the board. And we will now move on to our first agenda item. Please join me and rise for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And now the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Up first, we have our consent agenda, which is made up of routine items which require very little discussion or debate. Is there any comments or questions from the board in reference to the consent agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
The motion by Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Weaver. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Tonight, we have an oath of office for fire police for the Hemphill Fire Department. And before we do that, we need to add it to the agenda. So I'm looking for a motion to add the oath of office for the Hemphill Fire Police to the agenda.
So moved.
Okay, motion from Mr. LaFever, second from Mr. Russell. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. So gentlemen, if I could have you come up front.
Need a signature, that's it.
Okay, our next item up for business is, make sure I'm pronouncing this properly, Jason Yanuzzi, is that correct? Is he here?
I don't believe he is, no.
Okay, so it's a request to allow residential gas connection on the Chapel Forge Court. I guess this has been recently paved and the moratorium on it is until 2025.
That's correct.
Do we know when it was paved?
I don't, unfortunately.
If it was a 2025 moratorium, it would probably be 2020.
2020, yeah.
Do, I mean, I think we almost always waive these. I mean, is there?
Do we know what they're gonna be ripping up, though? What is Perry asking of them to have restoration, that kind of stuff?
It's no different than any of the others that we already approved. Minimize what they have to rip up, and then use fillable flow to fill the ditch, if it's necessary.
Are they actually having to rip up, or are they just locating utilities? Are they just doing the cores, or?
I don't know that. Don't know that.
Sounds like they had to dig up the pavement a little. I mean, it sounds like an emergency.
They're new owners, and they have some systems that need to be replaced.
If we were to hold fast to the ordinance, I believe that they could put a propane system in with the gas appliances as a temporary measure. And then, when they would be allowed to open the street, they could change the jets in the appliances. There is a precedent, though, and it's hard to justify going against the precedent if we have public works assuring us that these are always patched satisfactorily. It's always gonna be a patch, but it may be done very carefully.
Just to be clear, I'm in favor of opening it. It was not in favor. I'm just maybe suggesting that we take a look at the ordinance, and instead of requiring board approval, write in what we expect to be done when it is open in the future, and save residents at this point from coming before us and taking this extra step.
I kinda like having that little oversight there because, I mean, if it was a, this is not a frivolous request, but I mean, it could possibly be that someone wants to just dig up, isn't really urgent, and I think it's good to have that oversight.
I appreciate, because I'm all about not making more rules and regulations, but there's actually a PUC requirement behind this.
Okay.
And this is not so much for the individuals. It keeps UGI and others, it gives a pause for them from coming in and ripping up our streets. So while we are doing this for these individuals, it's actually keeping us, it's protecting us from the utility companies from just coming in right after we paved and ripping up the streets. They have to come at least have a discussion with us before they do it.
Okay.
So if we get away from the board approval, that gives us a little bit less control over that aspect. I'm all for making it as easy as possible for homeowners. But I do know that a lot of municipal parks are actually going this route of putting these moratoriums in there because they'll pave it, and a year later, UGI will put a line right down the middle of the road. And they have no leg to stand on where if you have a precedent of this, you could have a little bit more leeway with requiring a higher degree of restoration from the utility company, so.
Okay. So staff is in favor of it?
I know he had a conversation with Perry first, so I'm sure that the conversation dealt with how they were going to open the street and close it. And he has a fairly good understanding with UGI in terms of when they do that and what's expected.
Any other discussion? Any comments or questions from the audience or Zoom? So hearing none. Is there a motion to approve Mr. Yanuzzi's request for a road cut on Chapel Forge Court for the installation of gaff service to his property subject to UGI complying with all the township requirements, which includes the use of flowable fill?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Russell is their second. Second by the chair, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Old business, the 2023 budget, continued discussion.
So we had our budget meeting on October 25th, it was a Tuesday. Our budget is proposed to, it's been advertised, it's going to be considered for adoption on the first December meeting, which I believe is the seventh. And we typically have the budget on our agenda for the November meetings chilled out for further discussion. You also have as part of your packet, a list of edits that were done at that October meeting, which you just need to insert into your budget. We didn't reprint the whole budget at this point.
Were there any questions or comments from the board?
Do you, Mrs. Switzer, can you explain where the 150 comes from? That's actually from this year's budget?
So, so.
For Mr. Bennett and Mr. Weaver's benefit.
Yeah, we typically, Gina, let you do it.
The board has decided in the past to give $200,000 to be allocated to the police pension in order to bring them up to a higher funded percentage. And at the beginning of this year, after one of the four quarters, we usually pay it in four quarters after one of the 50,000 payments, it was decided to stop that because the current pension is funded at, I believe it's 93 or 94%. So for the 2022 budget, there is $150,000 that has been, that has been sitting and has not been spent. And the board has decided to move that $150,000 into the capital reserve budget in order to build that up for the upcoming projects. And then in the 2023 budget, that allocation is 200,000 annually. And it has been decided then to move those funds from the payment to the MMO for the police pension into the fire services fund in order to help increase the support for the apparatus that we will be purchasing. It should be ready probably, we're hoping, in 2025. So whatever is not saved in that account then will be, have to be financed.
Gina, if you would use the microphone and, thanks.
Were there any additional questions?
So the $150,000 this year that we're not going to spend is gonna move over to?
Capital Reserve.
Capital Reserve. And in 2023, we're gonna do basically the same thing.
Right, it's just.
With the $200,000.
$200,000, it'll go into the fire services.
So we won't be making any extra payment to the?
Just the MMO.
Just the required MMO.
Correct.
Okay. I guess my only concern is that I anticipate that our return on our investments may not keep us at that 92, 93% funding rate. Just based upon what's been going on in the investment world. And I think we all would like to see it stay there, so. This is one of the things that we talked about when I had my meeting, and you know, I'm okay with it, but you know, we've had a great year revenue and expense-wise. I was in, I personally was in favor of maybe funding a little, if not the whole 200,000, more than just the 50 that we were gonna do this year, but you know, it's a little bit of a concern that I would have. Just expressing that, okay? Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? And the only thing I'd just like to highlight on, just follow up on that change or what was stated, is just really emphasize that this payment that we've been making and that we've been making for the past several years is an additional payment in addition to what's required. And I think staff and township, we've done a very good job of getting our pensions where they need to be. And I think we're gonna continue to do that and fulfill our obligations. So I understand your concern with, you know, the market and us taking a decline, but I do think with the upcoming expenditures that we're gonna have with Centerville Road and some of the big fire apparatus equipment that we're gonna have to be paying for, I just think it's good stewardship right now just to redirect that. And I believe we will have plenty of time to come back and get and make sure the pensions are where they need to be. We are extremely healthy. I think we were given an A+ by our pension guru.
So maybe just a little history in that 200,000. When I came on the board in 2010, we were putting that 200,000 into our, I forget what the fund's name was, but it was basically, post-retirement healthcare fund, there's a.
OPEB.
OPEB, that's you. We're putting it into there. And at that time, we were making the change, we're talking about making the change to limiting that benefit with the police, and we kinda saw that that fund was very well-funded at that point. And the fact that we were able to cover all of our retirees with our general fund without having actually touched that fund. And then our police fund, our police pension at that point was in the low 70s for funding level. So we decided, instead of putting that 200,000 into the health fund, we were gonna put that into the police pension to improve that. So we, over the course of maybe, I think, about eight years now, we've been putting in about $200,000 extra into the police account, eight or seven years, somewhere around there. Been putting it in there too, and that's a big reason why we got it up above 90%. We always have the ability down the road to reevaluate again if the things start turning south, where we can increase that funding again too. The history of that is that there's always been that $200,000 funding. It's just kinda moved around to different areas, wherever the critical need was. And now the critical need's starting to become more infrastructure and fire apparatus at this point, so. But that's kind of the history where what's been happening with that fund.
Our budget discussion included that we're not anticipating any retirees for the next three years or so, so that the fund should be able even to grow a little bit.
Anything else in reference to the budget?
There was another question regarding, on page five of the general fund, under the contributions, whether the contributions would continue as it had been listed with the ambulance association receiving 17,000, library receiving 20,000, and the Hark for capital projects receiving 35,500, whether any of those would be adjusted?
So the discussion at the Tuesday meeting was, I posed the question, we had the $17,000 that we were putting towards Susquehanna Valley EMS. That has gone away, replaced by Penn State Lifeline. And last year, we contributed the 17,000. The question this year is, do we want to continue that? The consensus of the board at the time indicated that they did not want to. And then the question was, where do we want to reallocate that $17,000 to? My suggestion was the library. There was suggestion to increase Hark's capital. Then there was a question about the Hark capital and who's paying what. I did reach out to, well, I reached out to the other municipalities. And West Hemphill Township is doing a very similar funding scenario that we are, based on their per capita. Mountville and East P are simply paying their $2.12 per capita, which is part of the agreement. The $1.46 that we are paying in West Hemphill is an additional optional contribution.
So I thought we made a decision on, and maybe my recollection's wrong. I thought at the meeting on the 23rd, the budget meeting, that we made a decision not to to hold off on spending that 17,000, and we weren't gonna direct it anywhere.
That was the discussion. I don't know if it was an actual action at the end.
I thought we approved all of those items at the end. Thought we made a motion. I'm not saying we can't make a change.
My understanding was that it was to be brought up at this meeting with all of the members present.
Yeah, that wasn't part of the motion that you just approved tonight for the minutes that you approved. It's not to say it didn't happen, but I know it was discussed. I didn't think that there was a, the motion that included that. It did include the 200,000 and the 150, but I don't know that it included the contribution.
Okay.
But there was consensus that the funding should not be made to Lifeline. And we could simply just put it back into the general fund.
As you had presented too, they weren't asking like Susquehanna Valley EMS was asking.
That's correct. And our adjoining municipalities do not contribute.
We were the only ones that made a donation to them last year.
Correct, and they were quite surprised when they got it.
Cindy may be correct. We didn't keep it here, we just let it go back into the general fund. So it isn't going to the ambulance. I think Cindy's correct.
And that's fine. So the question is, at this point, that we're posing, if I understand correctly, is what are we gonna do with the 17,000 that we're not going to be contributing to the ambulance association?
You probably wanna make a motion to actually not, to adjust your proposed budget by 17,000, not to contribute to Lifeline.
Okay.
And just leave it go at that. It just goes back into the total.
Could I ask, on the library? What did we contribute last year to the library and since we were considering, we were considering increasing their funding?
We contributed 20,000, I think, for the past several years. And they had requested when they were here doing their presentation for nine or 10% more. Which would be about 2,000. I think it's 19. And nine or 10% more would be basically.
Two grand.
Two grand.
We take some of that and divide it up among some of those funds there, Hark, AHR Farm, the library, not all of it maybe, but.
It was 19 and 21, but it was 20 this year.
Yes, yes, thank you.
So, I mean, from my approach, I guess the way I would like to see, or I do have a concern with the, all of the capital projects that we have that are already on the books moving forward. And we've seen costs come in at a much higher rate than what they're projected for. I would prefer us to be cautious with where we spend and start spending money. I know we had a good year this year, tax-wise. Just like Mr. Bennett mentioned about the market going down and our investments might not be so rosy going forward when we get the new report. I feel very strongly that we're gonna be in that position next year, that revenues aren't gonna be as strong, expenses are gonna be higher. And we have several capital projects on the horizon in which we're gonna be exposed financially. And I really think when we start looking at, you know, are we gonna be raising taxes? Those questions are answered here and now, not next year when we have a budget shortfall. So that would be my preference, is that we take a wait-and-see approach. And if we do have another great year, then I think we can, and we feel that we can confidently handle all of those capital projects that we have before us, then I think it would be wise to start maybe increasing some of our donations. But I think right now, it would be premature. That's my position. I'm one of five, so.
I mean, that's a good point.
I mean, we're not increasing our spending. The 17 is what we used last year. I just think that we do need, as a board, we should be supporting our community. You know, and I recognize that capital improvements do that also. But you know, I just think that just moving the money over into the capital where it becomes a pot of funding.
Well.
Just. Go ahead.
I said 17,000, if we took two of that and just spread it around and then kept the 15 for a rainy day, I'm sure they'd appreciate anything we can give them.
But I am sensitive to what you say about the capital projects. We do have a lot of them. They're big. And operating expenses next year are gonna be higher just because of the economy. And we need to take that into consideration. But I think, again, I think on, all in all, from an expense and revenue standpoint this year, our revenue performed a lot better than we had expected. And we have kept our expenses in line. I think we could, I think we could choose this to to fund some of these organizations and products or projects.
So before we do, if we could just turn to the budget page where it's towards the back of the package. It's the analysis of the East Hemphill Township capital projects as of October 17, 2022. And this list of projects is daunting. And I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page and we're all aware of this now as we're having these discussions. We're looking at Centerville Road widening and construction. We're looking at Farmingdale and Good Drive. We're looking at Route 72 and Lidditz Road with the temporary signal. We're looking at our annual paving budget of 1.2 million. We're looking at the future of Stony Battery Road and Marietta intersection improvements. Old Roarstown Bridge replacement, Dairy Road Bridge replacement, other bridge preservations. AHR Park Wetlands creation, golf course, stream restoration, Harrisburg Pike drainage ditches. Harrisburg Pike Drainage Ditches. Nisley Road Golf Basins, Indian Spring Drainage. Marietta Avenue, ditch between Centerville and Stony Battery, Milmar Drainage. Aher Park Phase Two. Noel Doorward Park Pavilion Playground and Parking. Pickle Court, pickleball courts. Knox Box Consolidation. Roarstown Ladder Truck, which is a one point nine million dollar purchase. Hemphill Engine. And the total of all of those projects, if I'm reading this right, and correct me if I'm wrong. Is twenty-nine million? Six hundred and seventy-nine thousand, is that correct? For some of it.
Various percentages across the items.
Um, and if it, if I'm reading this correct, it looks like the township costs for that are seven million dollars. Is that correct?
The project total is thirty, is just over thirty-six million.
Okay.
And then the township portion that has been funded is the six million, six million nine hundred and forty thousand.
So my page here has seven million seventeen thousand three twenty-six.
Just to be. Totally. Here, the, the, the products you listed also include ones that are not being funded at this point. So the projects that are needed, but not moving forward on. We only have eleven that are moving forward on because of, we have funding for, uh, they're necessary.
Right. But these are various projects that we've identified.
Yes.
That we, we want to move at some point.
That's correct. Yes.
And of those, the eleven that you speak of are on the table and we're committed to currently.
Yes.
But so that's.
Yeah, I, I get it. They're, they're in, but they're in the budget. Okay, wha, whether we do them or, and, and some of them we can do or not do. And we, and we will. And then when we see what our financial situation is. On the cost of some of these projects, it's my understanding, and I could be wrong. My understanding that actually Centerville Road came in under, uh, under what we thought it would come in at. We know Farmingdale Road, uh, we know we have the money for that project. We know we're, uh, going to have some, we're going to have, have funds. It, excess funds that, that can go towards a lot, a lot of these projects anywhere, um, or anyway. So. And then on top of that, we had from a revenue, again, from a revenue standpoint, um, given our, our current tax situation. We had, we had a, a good year and we have an excess amount of funds from there also.
I, I don't know that I would say we have an excess amount of funds.
Well, excess over expenses.
So the way that we, the way that we budget, we typically budget very conservatively. And we typically forecast a very conservative estimate on our income. And we forecast. A very aggressive scenario on our expenses. And as in typical fashion, you know, the budget has more than balanced. But I do think with this list of projects moving forward. The, the reason that all of them are not committed right now is because we don't have the money to do it. To commit to it. That we've only committed to eleven. We see a need for all of these, otherwise they wouldn't be on the list. If we had the money to commit to it, they would all be committed to right now. And what I'm saying is, in one year, it's going to be much more clear. Once we get into Centerville Road, once we get into some of these other projects, we'll also. Understand what kind of economy, how we finished out this year, what we're looking at the first half of next year. And we'll have a clear financial picture. And I really think it would be wise to wait before we start committing, even though it's two thousand, fifteen thousand. You know, these numbers sound small, but pennies make pounds.
Okay. I hear what you're saying.
We are in a unusual, possibly unprecedented market situation. Today, particularly in construction with material deliveries and weather and inflation. And I have yet to see a project, much less a thirty-six million dollar project, that isn't going to run into some unforeseen conditions. And we're in for twenty percent of every one of them. So there's my caution on these things. Uh, I feel, as I say at church, when benevolence comes up, I think we're doing as a church our tithing part in this. And that the county gets to benefit from some of these projects that we're doing. So. I, I have no concern that we're short on our benevolence here in these, in these matters.
I, I agree obviously with the, the position that we. Go as fiscally conservative as we can right now, uh, given the way. The markets are, but given that we did make some big commitments years ago for infrastructure and now the bills are starting to come down. Um, and that was, that was deliberate. We knew. We've been building up and we've been working on this, this budgeting for the last decade now. To get to a point where we could fund these projects, which we are in a position to fund because originally. In, you know, in the two thousands, our capital reserve fund was doing nothing more than paying down the mortgage on the golf course and that was it. We had no money in reserve. And now we have millions of dollars in reserve. We've done that by refocusing how we've been expending money in the township. We used to be a lot more benevolent than we are today. I mean, there was a period of time. And someone can correct me from our staff where I'm wrong, where we were giving over a hundred thousand dollars to Hark. Um, at one point, we had a, we had all these other funds where we were giving considerable amounts of money. But we weren't keeping up with our infrastructure and our, the basic requirements of the township. Township refocused on infrastructure, but these projects got very conservative on funding, built up the capital reserve. Now we're at the position where we have to fund it. But we still would have come up short even after doing all that stuff. And we had not had the, the rescue fund money also going into this account. That was the only reason the numbers work right now. Uh, we, we would be two and a half million dollars short right now if we didn't have the rescue funds. Even with everything that's been done to date, which I think township's done the, the best it could possibly do. To rebuild up the capital reserve to, to deal with the infrastructure that we have now. I would just encourage us, just for a little bit longer, to keep this model. In place and get through this slug of capital reserve. State Road was the first big one. Centerville's the next one. And those were the two biggest infrastructure projects that the. Previous boards have all targeted as their top priorities. And now we're the ones that are going to be paying for it. And I agree with what they decided in the past, we, we needed to be done. But. I would encourage us to kind of keep that focus that we gotta get these projects built at this point.
So the question before says the seventeen thousand. So are we? I guess maybe we should just take a poll where each of us are at. The seventeen thousand, that's the only other question right on the budget. Anything else?
I believe so, during the question.
So we have seventeen thousand dollars that, uh, we're not going to be donating to Lifeline. And one option is that we just. Cross that off the budget and that money returns to the general fund?
Yes.
There could be another option that that money goes to some of those other items that were discussed. Mr. LaFever's in favor of booking it? That's where I'm at. Mr. Weaver?
Um, yeah, I guess we just keep it.
Mr. Russell?
Keep it.
Mr. Bennett?
There's no downside to booking it and keeping it for the future, but I just like to see it used if, if we can.
Okay. So we can have this discussion again next year. It was so much fun. We can. Do it all over again.
That's all this is, is discussion.
That's right. Alright, so do we need that to be a motion?
No. You already adopted the proposed. This is way beyond, below the limit that you worry about. We'll just make the adjustments on the final presentation.
Okay.
Is there anything that still needs to get finalized? Healthcare or any of that stuff at this point? We, we're good with all of our numbers at this point?
We're all good.
What was our healthcare renewal costs?
It went up eight point eight percent. We had some, um, basically bad experiences in our census.
Eight percent's not bad though, given what we've been doing for the last couple of years. We're not having a bad year.
It, for us, it's a bad year because we typically get a, a one or two percent increase.
Right.
So.
We've done good over the last couple.
Absolutely. We've had some negatives again. Yes. The only, uh, for the benefit of the people that are here, the only thing, the tax rate stays the same. We are proposing a. Seventeen percent increase in the trash and, and recycling billing. Which will basically mean, uh, ten dollars per quarter, I believe. Slightly less if you're paying by the year.
And that's a pass-through fee. The township really doesn't make anything out, but that just covers the trash disposal costs.
Correct.
We can bill that with LexSwama.
Right. We had tipping fee increases as well as escalator clauses in our existing contract with the hauler.
And unfortunately, that looks like it's going to go up again.
Yes.
In a few years. Okay. Are there any questions from the audience on the budget? Any questions from Zoom on the budget? New business. Uh, municipal separate storm sewer systems quarterly report from DMA.
This is really just to acknowledge the fact that, of what they have been doing the past quarter. They've been, um. Working on a couple of the projects, the Aher Wetland Restoration, the Nisley Road Basin Project. And then they actually submitted the MS four report for twenty twenty-two. They're doing, they want to do wet leather, weather, um, outfall discharge. Research, but of course it hasn't been that wet. So that's still on their, their list of things to do.
Do we, where, where do we stand with the, uh, the Pennington Basin with the outreach? It says outreach to the industrial. Where does that stand?
Good question. Pennington is McFarland, yeah.
Yeah, McFarland, the, the flooder.
We did, uh, reached out to them. We did the work. So the, the contract we have with Land Studies was the first time, first, uh, proposed, the first process was cutting, which has been done. The second process was herbicide application, which also has been done. Now we wait until spring, another herbicide application. And I think we have another, uh, cutting and then another herbicide, and then the township is finished. And then that point in time, the, uh, industrial people, businesses take over their basins.
Have we had those, it says the meeting, has that meeting been scheduled or have meetings occurred or are they to be scheduled or? Just because we keep getting those emails from a couple of the residents, I just want to kind of.
To be scheduled.
To be scheduled, okay.
Can we get that on the manager's report so that we keep it updated?
Sure.
Now, is there going to be, now that we've also just kind of fallen through with things that we talked about for that basin, are we? Now that, uh, Land Studies has done the clearing of it, are we going to have to do some clearing of the sediment around the outfall? Uh, at that basin or any of that type of work?
That is not part of the Land Studies proposal. I think when they looked at it, or they have to go back out after they cut it.
Yeah, it was, it was that we had to get cleared first before David Miller could even take a look at it. But that's really the next step then we're talking about before you might have some sediment to remove there in that basin too.
I thought David Miller said that the outfall was surprisingly clean when they did the tour.
I, I kind of remember that as well.
Right. It was surprisingly open and clean.
But we'll get, we'll get a report from them.
Yes, we, we were supposed to have this whole idea of getting cleared out so we actually see what we're dealing with.
Thank you for that Land Studies, uh, newsletter as it were, I guess.
Yeah, that's quite comprehensive.
Oh my word, really on top of things.
Yes.
Great. It's a good outfit to have in our portfolio.
Okay. Um, up next we have the manager's report.
So, uh, the Centerville Road.
Do we have to officially accept that quarterly report?
You're really just acknowledging it. You, I guess you could do a motion if you'd like. That way it's in the books.
Okay. Is there a motion to acknowledge the receipt and review of the DMA quarterly report regarding MS four activities? Motion by Mr. Weaver, um, seconded by Mr. LaFever. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Impose motion carries five to zero. Thank you.
That action actually goes in our MS four report that gets submitted to the state. So it's good that we acknowledge it. So the Centerville Road project, uh, we did have a pre-con meeting. That project is actually going to be starting November seventh, fourteenth. Uh, which is really just initiates, initializing some of the, uh. Not even roadwork. It's just coordination of the eleven utilities that are involved with the project. So, uh, residents won't see much going on, uh, maybe some signage, but, uh. Not a whole lot going on there, but they did make some. They're getting their shop drawings approved and, and that takes months to accomplish.
So it says nine-foot lanes. That means there's going to be a truck detour route then. I take it.
I think that they are inclined to handle no, no less than nine-foot lanes, which would not require truck detours. Was nine foot, right?
They did, they said nine foot and they did not indicate a truck detour.
Usually when you go less than ten, then you have to have some, get into the special hauling permitting. You might just want to ask back to them when they say nine-foot lanes, what does that involve with trucks?
They're, they're working through their traffic control plan based on. I won't even try to pick which pub because I can't remember the difference between two oh eight, two eighteen and all the others. But they're, they're not even at a point to be able to provide that yet. So.
It was.
It was PennDOT leading the meeting with, with traffic and all of the different, um, pieces in place there in the pre-con meeting. So I'm certain.
It was very clear when, when PennDOT was speaking that there was no intention of doing a truck detour route.
And you guess usually when you do nine-foot lanes, there's a truck permission for this to go through the nine-foot lanes.
And it's possible they misspoke about the nine foot.
So I just, just, I just saw that nine-foot lanes just usually is. And they have special signs. They got to put up about all that stuff too.
Did they give, um, any indication of, um, when the construction, the physical construction would actually begin and?
They had hoped that they would start one of the piers on the bridge, whatever that means, this year yet. But.
So before the end of this year, they're going to actually be there doing some?
Correct.
Wow, okay.
So I know there'll need to be a detailed schedule, but has there been a general scheduling? That would indicate the roadwork at Marietta and Centerville where we need to remove some houses and clean up that corner? Won't happen for another year or so?
The conversation I had during the pre-con meeting was that the township would let those houses down as soon as possible.
Yes.
And so they said they will try to work with the contractor to see if that can happen.
That's, that's good winter work.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, it's nice to see that project happening after ten years.
It came together quite quickly, yes, and, and got bid. Uh, I still don't have a signed contract with J.D. Ekman. But they, they were part of the pre-con, so they're, they're working through that. The Church Street Ward Line, uh, let Diane comment or, or chief on that, but it seems to be working pretty well in terms of traffic flow.
Um, we have had multiple conversations with them since the initial detour was put, or the initial signage was put in place. Um, to move and shift to make it more, um, functional for the school district. And the residents as well as safer for everyone. So you'll see some changes to those signs occurring again if you've been through there. Additionally, they went back to PennDOT and requested, uh, full twenty-four hour closures for workdays instead of the short. Twelve or thirteen hour days that they were doing. Um, we're having a lot of problem with driver confusion as to when they could and couldn't go through there, where they could and couldn't go. Um, and so between the school district, the police department, administration, PennDOT and the contractor. It was determined that it was safer and more efficient for the. Excuse me, for the project, um, to do twenty-four hour closure. So starting next week, the road will be closed Monday morning through Thursday. the road will be closed Monday morning through Thursday evening when they finish work. They only work on Fridays if they need a rain day. So the road will be open Friday, Saturday and Sunday with those closures in place for that four day block of work to occur. And that limits them having to move the signs around, decreases the confusion and increases the safety for the project.
So the Old Forest Town Road Bridge Project, very similar to Centerville, but a little further advanced. They are reviewing shop drawings. The contractor, J D Ekman, is going back and forth with the design engineer and, and it's, they're talking, so.
Can we back up to Church Street just quickly? Do we know roughly when that project's gonna be done?
The initial duration was six weeks. I, they haven't advised that that has changed at all, so.
Six weeks from when they started or six weeks from when they were started?
So Old Forest Town, we do have to work through a process. The way it's designed, it's gonna be very difficult to maintain that road open while they put those box culverts in. So that's still yet to be determined. Uh, we're working with the contractor on that. Um, Farmingdale Road, there's really no update on that. Uh, we're still waiting for J V I to get us a construction schedule, so I can tell you when that's gonna start. The campus fence has been done in the front and we're waiting for the chain light to come next week. I talked to you about the Hark funding that's listed there. Rec Authority, we did have a meeting the day after our budget meeting and I did convey the feelings of the board to the Rec Authority regarding the driving range and the paving. So they're looking at possibly improving the stone base rather than paving. And the driving range, they really do feel that there's no value there, that it can be used for something else. I do have vacant, we have two of the three vacancies filled in Public Works and our HR person has resigned, so I'm looking for an HR person for the township. In addition, I want to tell you, uh, the AT&T property, which township approved to purchase, has been accomplished. That transfer's been made. Uh, West Tenfield Township, I got advised by the township manager there that the, uh, Stony Battery Marietta intersection, we had asked them if they would be willing to take the lead in that project, or not that project, to look at how we can improve that intersection. That really is their intersection, but we share some of the, the right of way there. And their support, they, their board supports doing that. So they're going to wait probably till mid-winter to have a conversation, meeting with us and, and talk about how we move forward. So I was very supportive of them to do that.
That's awesome. Good.
That's all I have unless there's questions. Oh, I also advised, uh, Tenfield Water, Lassa and Hark regarding the ARPA funding and explained to them that we have projects that require that funding, so.
Okay, any other questions?
Just a quick questions, two quick questions on recreation projects. Um, Noel Doorwood Park. What's the timeline? Do you have an idea of what the timeline's gonna be on, on that project?
The grant is a four-year grant, so given the number of projects we have going, I postponed that for one year. So that probably will start in twenty twenty-four.
Okay, how about, uh, Aher Park?
Aher Park will be this year, starting, well, I should say next year.
Next year, okay. But the.
The wetlands basin and the trail will also be next year at Aher.
But Noel Doorwood Park funding is on there for next year?
Yes, uh, twenty-four.
No, it's on the twenty-three budget.
Noel Doorwood Park.
Page your own, Mr. Ben.
Page one of the analysis of East Tenfield Township Capital Projects.
There might be a discrepancy.
I mean, my point, it shouldn't be on there for next year.
No, the intent was to have it for twenty twenty-four.
So it just saved us a million dollars.
It's not on here because it's not being funded.
So I just, just wanted to, just asking about that and then, uh, Aher Park is gonna happen this year, the Pavilion Bocce Ball Parking Trails, so will be this year.
So I'm looking at it and the timeline I see says twenty-four, twenty-five. If you followed over.
Yeah, it does say that, you're right. But we, but we have gotten the grants, right?
We've been awarded a grant, we don't have it, it's a reimbursement.
Okay, alright.
It would be good for till twenty twenty-four.
Okay, just, yeah, but some discussion on that, that's on. And, um, and then lastly, um, when can we expect, uh, expect the financial support from the, from Penn State or Emergency Services?
I was hoping for something quickly, but now I'm being told that probably March, April, which is within their six month window.
It is, okay.
And I did reach out, uh, he did come back to me, uh, regarding a presentation of funding and they would support that.
They will support?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so, uh, that's on Diane's and John's radar for March, April to have some sort of presentation, check presentation for, to acknowledge the fact that that money will be going towards the, uh, new pump or at, uh, Old Forest, or Old Forest Town, Forest Town Fire Company.
Okay.
That's cool.
Yeah, they, they did turn around.
Thank you.
Anything else for that? Good, in order. Any public comment? Any, anyone online? Well, then it is seven fifty-seven and we will adjourn our meeting. Thank you.
He did indicate public comment?
No. No, well, actually, go ahead.
Yeah.
Come on up.
Should be on green. Is it green or red? Oh, that's not good.
Thank you. Still getting used to your meetings. Sorry about that.
Uh, I wanted to thank you again for allowing me to address you, you folks. I spoke to you last time on September the seventh, addressed my concerns about my neighbor's parking of his Type Two RV, uh, too close to the side lot line. At the time, you voted on changes to two seventy dash four point seven outside storage of recreational vehicles. Uh, that did pass. Uh, what that essentially did was eliminated the descriptions between Type One and Type Two vehicles, they were just combined. So after studying the changes recently that you voted to accept, there is now no distinction between the parking of any said vehicle. Neither Type RV can be parked residentially for more than seventy-two hours in a seven day period, as it reads. Long-term storage of an RV applies only for developments consisting of, uh, a construct, I, I'm, I'm assuming a construction company who is building more than twenty single semi-detached dwellings. I called the zoning officer, uh, October seventeenth, complained that my neighbor has parked five feet from the lot line, but again, has extended the wings of his RV. In so doing, he's now only two feet from the lot line. I know that, I was told that they went out for a site visit and a, uh, email was sent to him. His response to the email that I was told was that he was cleaning out his RV for an upcoming trip. So at that, at that time, uh, there was to be no issuance of a citation. I could not find anywhere in the code where it says you can extend your wings for cleaning out your, your RV. I would think he would be able to park that in the middle of his driveway away from the lot line. Uh, storage of recreational vehicles for extended periods, like I said, that storage is for development of more than twenty single, uh, residents anywhere. There is nothing in the codes that says any RV can be parked permanently in a residential zone. Nothing. I do not find that word. Uh, additionally, I mean, I, I have a neighbor that's just a pain. Uh, can I find any codes as to the use of floodlights in the driveways? But he has now installed three of them above his drive, above his garage. And when my, when I and my family go out to the front yard to exercise the dog in the evening, those lights come on. Uh, I'm assuming he's probably, uh, filming us, uh, cause I know that his, his mother-in-law, no, his mother has been in the backyard filming us while either my wife or my daughter is just cutting the lawn for no real reason. So when the lights come on, they are bright enough that they light up the entire front of my house and all the way over to the neighbor, to the east of me, into their bedroom windows. I think that's rather excessive. I, I tried to look up anything that had to do with the illumination of, of the lights. I know that there's something about so many candle towers, it's so many feet, I just didn't read it close enough to understand what that was. So I'm asking again, the codes need to be enforced, that's why they're there. There should not be any selective enforcement that I can, that I would be able to understand along those lines. Uh, he's back now from the trip that he took, he parked it Sunday. Again, it is five feet from, from the lot line, but the wings are extended out again because I feel he got, you know, he got a break the last time he had them out, so now he's taking advantage of it again. It's been there four days and as it says in the code, seventy-two hours in a seven day period. If I'm mistaken, I would like for somebody to point that out for me. If not, if I am correct, then I would like for that code to be enforced. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody have any comments or wanna, wanna respond to that? So I think at this point, we're gonna refer to staff, um, and I'm sure our manager and staff will be able to handle this, but I would just like to speak, this is not the first neighbor complaint that we've gotten to the board. Um, we're very hesitant to get involved into these types of complaint tip for tat, back and forth. Uh, I hear what you're saying, um, and understand that you have a problem. But again, it's a question of what should government be involved in and what shouldn't they be involved in? I hear you on the, I hear you on the, this is what the ordinance says and this is where we're at. I'm just saying from our perspective, you know, we try not to get in the middle of these kinds of things. So staff will look into it, they'll make their findings.
Staff has looked into it and addressed Mr. Terry's concerns. There's, there's reasonable and then there's selective. We are not being selectively enforcing the ordinance, we are being reasonable in selective, in, in enforcing the ordinance. Mr. Terry's concern is that the wings, when they're out, is a violation of the ordinance. The fact of the matter is if we issue a violation notice to the neighbor, he has thirty days to rectify that. And that's a case of staff time, to be quite honest. And we did address, as soon as the complaint came in, we reached out to the neighbor and said, hey, you're in violation of the ordinance. He responded to us and corrected the situation. Uh, so I, I'm not sure what you want staff to do in this regard. Because there is a violation, there's no doubt about it, when he puts the wings out, he's within five foot. However.
So I just.
Reasonable.
One thing too, I just wanna sort of quarterback or paint a picture for you. At some point, this will go before judicial body.
Yes.
Okay, and to be frank, they're not gonna wanna hear it.
I understand that from a year ago, talking with Nate Sturgis about another problem you had where somebody violated for six months and was only fined a hundred and fifty dollars.
So, you know, again, the, the, they oversee us.
Okay.
Okay. Um, we don't wanna be bringing these types of, of charges to judicial officials on a regular basis. If there's good, good reason, yes. But because the wings are open for five feet, I mean, it's just, it's a tough situation and I empathize that you have a difficult neighbor, that the two of you are not getting along. I think, you know, again, take a look at it, see what staff thinks, you know, if it's your determination not.
We have.
Okay.
That's our determination, is that as soon as the violation is known to us, we reach out to the neighbor and explain the situation and he's fully aware.
Yeah.
There, there's not more than we can do. And, and you're quite right that if we take it to a district justice, he will not hear it.
Would that be the same in my case if I take it to him?
He, he would be responding, you would have to do a civil complaint.
Right.
Neighbor to neighbor.
Cause when you say he corrected it, he corrected it when he pulled the wings in and left on Sunday, seven days later. Now he's back and they're open again. I mean, that's just one of the things he's, he's, he does.
Well, that was the thing that was the last complaint.
Okay, right.
Regarding the lighting, there's nothing that can be done. We have no ordinance or requirement that, that addresses lighting.
I just have to put up with him. Cause he climbs up on top of the RV to see what we're doing in our backyard. I mean, if we have guests over, he's picking up pieces of metal and dropping them in the driveway just to make noise to, you know, it's like, he's an idiot.
Staff looked at the lighting assertion.
This is the first we've heard of the lighting.
Yeah, this is the first I've brought it up.
I think the lighting requires inspection and determination.
Well, I, I can relate this to a, a lighting issue. We had a concern at a church off of Columbia Avenue, that the light was shining directly into somebody's, uh, bedroom.
Yeah.
Right.
And that was looked at and there was, there's nothing that we have in the books that would stop that from happening. We did, as staff, reach out and say, do you realize what kind of impact you're having? The, uh, neighbor also reached out to the church and asked and nothing was changed.
We've had success with warehouses and people and the type of lighting that they use and it would seem to me that that is a valid annoyance. I think your objection is not so much the wing, sir, it's the SUV being there, the large structure.
Yeah.
And that would annoy me also in a neighborhood property. Unfortunately, there isn't anything we can do about that. I guess we don't see the wings up there above the property line or within the two feet as a real issue here, but we'd like to see some amicability between you and your neighbor. There's no point you, you continue as you are.
Right.
And it'll take both of you. And, uh, I don't know how we can really assist in that very much other than what we're telling you here. Send him a fruitcake at Christmas or something. I'm, I'm not being facetious, I'm being serious. You have to do something in a case like this to bridge what seems impossible, cause it's not impossible, it just, if we can, we could look at the lighting maybe. If we can't, we can't. Um, that to me would be the real annoyance and the real thing that possibly is a violation of your property.
Okay. Well, the real annoyance is the, is the permanent parking of the RV itself.
I'm afraid that's in the books.
It, well, no, it says seventy-two hours in a seven day period. That's all he can park it there for. That's prepping for going on a trip and cleaning up when he gets back.
What does he do with it the rest of the time?
It sits there.
Oh, well, that we should.
I, I'd have to check the ordinance, but I believe that that, it is allowed in the side yard, which is this is in the side yard.
It's the side yard, five feet away, ten feet from the, from the front, seventy-two hours.
That was parking on the streets, I believe. I'm not too sure on property and I'm not.
Uh, yeah, again, I'm not either, yeah.
Sounds like.
I think we could look into that a bit.
Sounds like something like if somebody puts a shed there that is a semi-permanent structure, you give them thirty days to move it. Says it's continual violations and each time they get thirty days.
Right.
So it's just never gonna, it's never gonna be enforceable. it's never gonna be enforceable.
Yeah. Can't say I didn't try, I appreciate your time.
Okay, so the one thing we do owe you, we do owe you a clarification on the ordinance, you raised the question and we can't answer it, so let's answer that question. That he's permanent. There, does it, is it seventy-two hours or not? That it's allowed there in the side yard and, and let's give a justification for that, if we can, please.
I think, yeah, the only way to, to deal with this would be to change the ordinance that you get one day to to fix it or one hour or whatever, but as soon as they get the notice, they'll just put the wings in and, okay, I'm in, I'm in compliance now, so almost need a zero tolerance policy, I don't know if we can even do that.
And then that affects everyone, not just this particular situation, which we really, we do not wanna be a police state, we do not wanna be
I understand.
Involved in, um, in areas that we feel government should be restrained. So, um, let's get back to him on
We'll do.
On clarification on the statute. And then we'll go from there.
You have my phone number.
I do.
An email, cause it's, I'd like for you to hash it out with me if you would.
Well, it's gonna be black and white, if it's there or not there, yeah.
You're welcome. Okay, do we have any other comments or questions? Okay. Okay, hearing none, then we will officially adjourn the meeting at eight, eleven PM.